Just grants on Tuesday.
It's a. Grant and, and Hans.
Hey.
Yes, you.
Welcome to the Lacey Plan Convention meeting, Tuesday, June twenty third. We're calling meeting to order. I'm looking for approval of the agenda and consent items.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay, and public comments? Anybody out there? Somebody?
I don't see any attendees in the audience, but anything to say to the planning commission? This is your opportunity to do that. Hit the raise hand function and we'll bring you in. Not seeing anybody?
And I don't see anybody sitting in chairs here. All right, so permission member reports.
No report.
Nothing.
Did watch the council meeting? So it was an interesting meeting, and they talked about trees, magic lab, so. Maybe in your, if you can give us that, that would be good. Alrighty. Okay.
Um, I did just want to say that I went to the city's celebration for Juneteenth, and I thought it was amazing, and I just want to say that the fact that the city of Lacey government and the Lacey PD celebrated this first inaugural year of this federal holiday, I am just uplifted at our community and I truly believe that what we celebrate really reflects our core values, and so I'm just very grateful that our city is welcoming and inclusive.
The social media on it was really good too tonight, so.
In that council meeting, they had like. Okay, we move on to director's report.
Yeah, and as Dave mentioned, first, you know, the Councilman Conkle with some other points that he actually made a wood replica of the Juneteenth flag and presented it to the Harris Lodge for, for the Juneteenth celebration. That was a pretty nice moment at the council meeting. Other businesses at the council meeting, they did find, have on schedule for their agenda, the amendments to the tree orders, LLC fourteen thirty-two. This is following up the work on the urban forestry plan update, and so there's been some, what, five total times that it's been before the council, the work session, or council, or the regular meeting for action, and the council is really working on the provisions for the last couple of meetings, provisions for exemptions for tree permits, and the previous exemption, or the traditional exemption, was allow a single-family residential lot to be able to remove five trees within a three-year period as, as an exemption from having to get a land clearing permit. So it was, came out, as you, the planning commission may recall, it came out recommendations from the Tree Task Force, as well as the planning commission, to eliminate that provision in the ordinance, because with the tree density ratios that have been put in place years ago and other factors, there was a redundant provision for for that review. So basically, you allow, just using the tree ratios, somebody to remove trees in their parcel, be exempt until they got to a quantity or point, and then you put a forest practice for them. There's a lot of concern over that from the public. Council was looking at that issue, and and so last Thursday night, after Ryan's presentation, did a great job presenting the whole issues and the options for council, whether to adopt the orders as presented, or to remove that amendment and maintain the five trees in three-year period. I always have to stop and think, get mixed up between five and three and three and five, but five trees in three-year period. So the council started deliberation, and a motion was made and seconded to amend the proposed orders and actually to amend it in a manner that required a, allowed an exemption for removal of three trees every five years or sixty months. So council then looked forward to a little bit of discussion and vote, and the council approved that on, I think it was a three to two vote. So now going into the books going forward, it's, our permit threshold was actually lowered for a single-family homeowner to a, again, a removal of three trees in a five-year period. That doesn't include, you know, of course, hazard trees or, or healthy disease trees, those are still exempt. And so now we'll be moving that forward through our permitting process, to our staff, so they're aware and be able to help inform homeowners that are coming in, looking to remove trees on their parcel. They still have the minimum tree ratios that each parcel has to maintain, and then, of course, if they want to remove more than those three trees in a five-year period, then they go through our land clearing permit process, which is an administrative process that will is, I think our application right now around three hundred and eighty-five dollars, plus the cost of a forestry review to make recommendations, and then they can remove as many trees as they as warranted under that permit review process. So again, sometimes I think it was got confusing to, to a lot of people involved in the conversation with the other can counsel that this exemption is a actual regulation, and it's not. It's important distinction that this is just a a exemption from a higher level of review and scrutiny of a proposed tree removal process. And so we may see, you know, you know, somebody comes through and want to remove those five, six trees and comes through a land clearing process, and maybe some concerns raised by a recent property alert, but then that's where we'll come in and try to explain the process and then how, how it works, and hopefully they will understand. It's been a very polarizing topic and, and a lot of kind of misinformation and confusion on what the ordinance and what they really meant in those processes, but this is finally wrapped up. Next step, so, is what we'll be looking at, probably updating the urban forestry plan at some point in the near, near future, probably around the twenty twenty-five updates. But we don't want to do anything there yet until we have some work done at the regional level on trees, which the, there's a sequestration study that's supposed to be close to completion at the Regional Climate Action Committee level, and that will help inform what sequestration looks like on a county-wide basis, and then we have to balance that with, of course, the growth management and how you look at rural areas versus urban areas, where you need to accommodate population and density and development, and where you preserve your resource lands and find that balance. So that will be a future conversation for the planning commission, but this is going to be a way, a ways off until we get some more information for you. Any question on that?
That's for single family person.
Correct.
That's important for us to understand. It doesn't have to do, you know, when you see somebody go in and they, which is what I think a lot of our residents sees when they wholesale clean off huge lot. It can shocks them, but what happened doesn't, isn't a reflection on that.
Right, and, and the, and it's just, and in those instances, it's going through a tree permit review that's just tied to that underlying land use. It's underlying the actual primary land use application, whether it's a site plan review or a conditioning process. There is still a scrutiny on what trees will be removed in concert with the development site plan and tree, or tree regulations. And where we can, we'll adjust site plans to accommodate trees, or, you know, a lot of times, and a lot of problems too, is as you've mentioned, Joe Lawson, is especially out in the northeast area, there's a lot of laminated root rot out there. So the trees that we were going to save, they're pretty, look mature, look healthy, have diseased roots, and eventually are going to be hazardous trees to adjacent properties. And so they go in and remove those, replant that. But a lot of people don't understand that there are, are that, those type of conditions out there that are being addressed.
So will the new track, is it Tracket, the new permitting process, will homeowners be able to use that for this process, or is this going to be a strain on the city staff?
It'll be, it'll be tied to a online, officially a online permitting, but yes, Tracket will be able to monitor that, and will be able to identify how many trees they have taken out over those five-year periods and notify them of where they need to go to a higher level permit review or hold off and wait. Another, I know one of the highlight, well, one is the meeting scheduled for July. So with July coming up, Ryan and I were talking this morning about schedules. We have quite a few staff vacations that are overlapping, plus with the launch of our permit Tracket system and some of the troubleshooting we still need to do on that as it goes live, as we know, any type of technology you go live with, there's always those budgets you have to work out. And then also, we're getting prepared for bringing all the comp plan amendments to the council. And I guess, four times, you know, there's not any pressing agenda items. We're looking to cancel both meetings in July. That way, it will kind of coalesce into being able to get some of the work done, you know, get those vacation overlap, kind of take some pressure off of there. But also too, as I know the planning commission's been seen in the council conversations, as well as in the community, the issues with the neighborhood commercial zone with this most recent fuel market proposal. So what we're going to be looking at now, another conversation that we had at council last Thursday night, and we saw in the paper, an article about it. The concerns about the codes and being updated and reflecting, and so the forum council that we are planning on taking that on as a effort this fall to start doing some community engagement with the various neighborhoods, probably focusing up in the northeast area at first, because there's still a lot of what, I don't want to, I might use compassion, emotion about towards that issue, and maybe we can get some actual community engagement and build off of that, and re-looking at our neighbor commercial zones, and using that as a, a small-scale process to kind of inform us how to tackle maybe a full zoning code review and audit once we get it closer to the twenty twenty-five update.
Related question on that. I know a lot of the there was a lot of unhappiness about the quasi-judicial role of the city council. Is that is that required by state law? Are there other options for how that review process could work, or is the city council just in that role and they have no choice?
That's, that's a great question, and that's also going to be a topic we're going to have with council coming August. So we're going to talk about the neighborhood commercial zone review with council, hopefully August eleventh work session, and this particular topic as well, the quasi-judicial process. So state law allows the council to determine what role they play in that. They can be either the final decision maker, like we are now, or they can have the hearing examiner be a final decision maker, and then appeals to the council, and the council adhering appeals. Or a third option is they, the hearing examiner can be the final decision maker, and the appeals go directly to Superior Court, and the council's completely removed out of that process. And we've talked to council quite several times over the years about that rule and trying to figure out how that best fit. And I think there's this step balance that the council's thinking is, well, yes, I may not have the technical expertise to review these things, but there's still this expectation from the community that we're involved, and trying to figure out, well, are you truly involved? How does that really affect, and does that create any consequences? Anyways, you know, from my personal opinion, or professional opinion, and this role is, I see the council's in a rock and a hard spot. Because they are, you know, in that role of final decision, so they have this appearance that they're going to be able to, they can't talk to staff or the public, they can't talk to staff to get informed, they have a week's time to kind of review the materials and then make a decision. It's probably going to be unpopular. And, but they can't communicate, they can't talk through that whole.
Right, they can't talk to their constituents, they can't do anything.
And unless they can themselves find a technical thing based on the record and, and law, they can't really overturn that decision, or they could, they could face liability, you know, city or themselves, depending on what the circumstances are. So those, that's, you know, the conversation we want to have with the, the council in August is, again, revisit that, and what their, what their role is in that process. And, you know, hopefully too, with showing that we're responsive to revisiting the neighborhood commercial, the things that are made the angst. That can be that role, that they can even start that process sometime sooner, once these issues pop up, versus wait until a complete permitting process is complete and then go forward. So we'll, we'll see how that conversation goes and, and keep the planning commission up on. That's it for me. If there's any other questions.
Alrighty, thank you. Under new business? We have fun to talk about the residential land.
Well, hello. So I have two different presentations for you this evening. The first one is going to be the residential land capacity, and this one is partially driven out of when we received the rezon application that we've presented previously. One of the primary justifications within that application was talking about the availability of moderate-density residential land compared to low-density. So kind of in response to that, we took a deeper dive and really looked at what is the current situation as far as different residential densities go, and what do we really have out there that's available today? So when folks are going out to build whatever they might have in mind, where really, what, where are their opportunities? So with that, I am going to share my screen here.
Well, Hans brings that up as well. This came out of a discussion that the planning commission had month or month and a half ago about wanting to look at what properties were available in Lacey for single-family development, and so we were already prepared, we were already preparing to do this, and it feeds really well into that discussion with the rezon to look at not only what we have, but, you know, if we, if we change course a little bit with some of these rezones, what does that mean in terms of, you know, are we, are we kind of backing ourselves into a corner if we're not having enough of a certain type of zoned land available? So it was good, it was good timing. It, it really was to look at not only the, the amount of land we have, that was kind of the request of the planning commission, but also how that applies to the reason.
And this sheet that I passed around here, this is going to be included in this presentation. It's broken out a little bit, but it really runs through a lot of portable housing continuum, and I am going to rely on both Rick and Ryan to help me out on that one a little bit, because there's a lot of information in there to cover. So, but that will give a little bit of a backstory. There we go. So House Bill nineteen twenty-three kind of, that came out and stated that there was a need for increased residential capacity really across the board. And that's not specific to Lacey or anywhere else, but just, there's a growing need for more housing options. And that's not even necessarily one type of option or the other, just different choices, a mix of options for everybody within a community. So really to encourage construction of additional portable and market-rate housing and a greater variety in housing types at prices that are accessible to a greater variety of incomes. And that was partially in response to this growing trend that's mapped out. When you do a comp plan, you really have to project forward, so that's really kind of anticipating future growth and how to accommodate that. And this chart here gives a breakdown of both city and urban growth populations for Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater. And I believe we actually just officially surpassed Olympia as far as our population goes within the city, but that was definitely unknown. And looking forward, especially when you factor in the UGA, that increase or disparity of where we're at compared to other communities is just growing. So we know that we have a lot of folks, and that's, that's something that is going to keep going up. So that's, that's one of the reasons that we start to see this transition in housing types. So the permitting historically has been very single-family oriented, and that's true in Lacey, that's true in Olympia, that's true in Tomwater and Thurston County. But in the last five-plus years, we're starting to see that transition from predominantly single-family permitting to more of multifamily. So we're seeing more of those permits. One caveat there though, which actually is shown pretty well on this slide. Sorry for the, these are getting pretty small numbers here, but the dominant housing type is still very much so single-family within the city of Lacey. It's actually around seventy-one percent of the housing stock is still single-family. In comparison, Olympia is around fifty-eight, and Tomwater is around sixty-five. Yeah, so that's for single-family, and then when we're looking at multifamily, we're around just under fifteen percent right now within the community. And then by contrast, Olympia is right around thirty, and Tomwater is right around twenty. Comparatively, Thurston County is actually right around twelve. So between all of those different jurisdictions, we're actually closer to the county as far as the housing stock and type that we have within the city right now, as far as single-family versus multifamily, that breakdown in comparison.
Would it be all right if I asked a question?
Absolutely. Please, this is, this is mostly a discussion base, so anytime that anybody has any questions, feel free to jump in.
I feel Lacey has really changed since twenty eighteen. Do you have a sense on that previous chart where those percentages maybe have moved since that, that twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen, because I, I do believe we've had a big change in the last four years.
Absolutely. So I don't have a slide specific to the last few years. I do know that Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater are all definitely adding their multifamily. So each one of those percentages is rising, but that disparity still exists there.
Of course.
So that is something that we can definitely collect more information on. And one thing I should say, we have a lot of charts in this presentation, and they are pulled, pulled from slightly different sources, so it's not perfectly apples-to-apples and everything that we're looking at here, but generally, it's kind of intended to paint a picture of where we're at.
I noticed that too, in twenty fifteen, is about, is that time period where we started to see the shift single-family plaques and single-family detached permits to our first, starting to see our applications for multifamily. I think twenty sixteen was the first year we issued a lot of multifamily, and you might say a lot, probably around three hundred or four hundred units. But from that point, going back to two thousand, that was more than we issued in those whole fifteen years, that one year. And then we're seeing that trend in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Twenty seventeen, I think we didn't have any permits issued, because again, there was more projects coming in for their development review, and so, but they're queued up for permitted issuance in twenty eighteen. And then since then, we've had a steady steam of about between four hundred and six hundred units per year. So, yes, you're right, in these last three years, we've seen a big change. What's nice about that chart was, is showing that we're starting to kind of catch up to be kind of more similar to our other adjacent communities, and we still have a, a pretty healthy mix of different types of housing types.
This chart shows it a bit here, and then jumping forward, this one is a little bit more towards density, residential density specifically, but it's the same time period, really just looking at over time, the dark blue is that twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen period. That's the bar farthest to the right, and you can see that as more multifamily units are added, that density specifically within the city is starting to climb, but you can see that those other bars are, at least the only one. Actually, the combined one is just above where it lazy's at right now, so. And then from there, what we did is we actually took a look at low-density, moderate-density, and high-density, both as a percentage of all the types of zoning that we have within the community. So one quick note on that, there are mixed-use zones and a few other zones that do include residential development as an allowed use or some variation thereof. But for this, we're only really looking at low-density, moderate-density, and high-density, because those are the easiest ones to really pull out and know that that's predominantly a residential zone that we're looking at there. So those three zones combined represent just over twenty-five percent of the total zones within the city as a comparison. You can see that low-density, and this is number of acres right now that we're looking at, but low-density definitely represents the largest portion of those. Taking that a step further, we broke it down by developed, undeveloped, and then redevelopment potential. So lots that maybe have some level of investment, but still the value of the lot itself exceeds that of any investment out there. So somebody may have done some clearing or put in a shed of some form or another, but very minimal investment compared to the potential of that land. So we broke it down into those three categories. Dark blue is developed, so there's some form of house or residential structure on that site that exceeds the value of the land. And then yellow, which you can start to see a little bit there, is that fully undeveloped land. And again, this is, sorry, at this time, this is number of parcels, so we're switching back and forth here. So undeveloped is that yellow bar, and then the gray bar, which essentially disappears at the top of each one of these, is the redevelopment potential. So some, the lots that are out there that have received some form of investment, but still the land far exceeds whatever that investment is. So really looking into the future, lots that are likely to redevelop and offer additional housing. So that's kind of a breakdown there, and this is looking at it in a partial capacity. Zooming into those bars, just looking at it as far as a hundred percent of the the total acres, we have a breakdown. So eighty percent of low-density is fully developed, thirteen percent is undeveloped, and six point five has some degree of development, but is still has redevelopment opportunity in the future. Moving over to moderate density, we see that at seventy-seven point three percent is developed or fully developed, and then the, we have about nine point seven percent is fully undeveloped and available for future development, and then we have thirteen percent, and then over high-density, we have sixty-eight, twenty-six, and four point seven.
I'm sorry, can you?
Yeah, for sure.
I got confused on that.
That's fair.
So I want to make sure I understand that. So like for low-density, sorry, I can't read the percentages. It's too far away for me, but, so that's how much? Is this acres, or is this?
So this is acres this time. So it's percent of total acres. So of residential land that is out there.
Just under three thousand acres of land out there.
Yeah. Those are by zoning type, acres by zoning type. Okay, so yeah, so right around two thousand seven hundred and fifty acres of low-density land is really kind of what we're working with. So when we're looking at these numbers, that's of all of that land, what percentage of that is fully developed versus undeveloped or has redevelopment potential?
Does this include UGAs?
It does not. So this is just within the city. Yep, so that is something that we can look at in the future, because at some point, when that land is brought in, that will change the numbers that we're working with.
And then also too, I think with UGA, and Ryan can, you know, weigh in on this too, is I think you're going to see this very similar ratios of zone, residential zone, the low-density zone land, water and high, and maybe even a little higher ratio of low-density versus water high in the urban areas.
Yeah, so if we jump, we'll be jumping around on you guys a bit here.
Yeah, if you were to look at a zoning, just, just generally, you know, our, our UGA is mostly yellow, which is residential, so it's going to be primarily single-family.
Yeah, and that's represented here in the Thurston County. It's captured as far as where that single-family breakout is. Jumping back a little bit here though. So the next slide that we have is buildable acres based on zoning type. So breaking it out, so looking at acres this time, sorry about that. Low-density, there are three hundred and ninety acres. Yeah, so now we're just looking at the top two bars, so undeveloped and redevelopment potential. So here, the darker bar on each one of these is the undeveloped, and then the lighter bar above it is the redevelopment potential. So for low-density, there are three hundred and ninety available acres that are currently zoned low-density residential and don't have any form of development on them. As far as redevelopment potential, there's a hundred and eighty-eight acres out there that have some form of development on them, but still are, are have a high likelihood in the future to be redeveloped to add more residential units. Looking at moderate density, there's eighty-six acres that are out there that are currently undeveloped that are in that moderate-density zoning type, and then there's a hundred and fifteen that are likely to be redeveloped to add additional housing units in the future. Any questions?
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going to have a lot.
Yeah, no, please, please.
For you guys. So on the moderate density, like, if we're going to put in like, you know, a multi-unit apartment complex, I know the one that we had looked at, I think was just five acres, right?
Correct.
Okay. Say the one like by Duderow and Martin, how many acres is that? Help give me some perspective. Do you, can you, like, how, how many, like, divisions of like an apartment complex with, you know, a decently sized, would that number of acres be? I'm just trying to get some perspective.
Well, if you're looking at, like, say, the eighty-six point five acres and average density of ten units per acre, and of course, it's a hundred and sixty units. Partial size is very thorough. Um parcel size is very throughout the. Kind of visualize the the Duderow site that's out in the U G A, so I don't really, you don't really look at that.
Sorry, that's what I see.
But um trying to visualize, but you know typically those parcels, we don't have any, a lot of large parcels last year. You're gonna see those five and five to ten acre range.
And that brings up another great point that just because there's eighty six acres of moderate density zoned. Available land out there, that's by no means is that suggests that it's next to each other or arranged in a way that is easily developable in its current form. So that might mean that there's a few acres on one side of the road and then a few, you know, kind of spaced out around. So it's it's. Those larger chunks of land that really are prime to receive that type of development are are fewer and far between. I guess is the message that we're getting at there.
Well, that'd probably be for all three types, wouldn't it? It's just, just that acreage doesn't necessarily mean it could be a housing division or development or. Apartment complex or, you know, some sort of tower or something is doesn't necessarily mean it's the size.
For sure. Okay, what for low density, uh generally you're targeting smaller lots, so there's fair amount more flexibility there. As you move up in density, you're typically looking at larger development styles that do require more land that is connected to each other. In order to really make it work and pencil, so. That's kind of the breakdown that we're looking at there. And then as far as uh undeveloped and redevelopment potential, uh. Residential land that's out there, sixty three percent of that land is low density. That's what we see that little pie chart up there. Twenty two percent of that land is moderate density. And then fifteen percent of that is high density. So as far as residential zoning. That's out there and available today, that's kind of the breakdown of available land that is either undeveloped or has high redevelopment potential. This chart here is a one that I imagine a lot of us are somewhat familiar with. It's on one side, we have uh home sale prices over the last. Uh twenty years or ten years, I should say, and then uh also the average rent, uh both for. Really Thurston County is what we're looking at here, uh in both scenarios, it is going up. What we do have as far as information on this is that uh after factoring in mortgage and other housing related repair costs. The homeownership payments are still consistently about two hundred plus dollars more a month than rental arrangements. Uh over that time period, as far as what we're looking at there, there are a lot of other factors that equate into that, but as far as kind of. While those charts are both going up, the cost of homeownership has been a couple hundred dollars more expensive consistently. Over that time period.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the monthly cost of that. It's not necessarily a net cost if there's some sort of equity gained or tax. Uh tax, so it's it's just my core monthly expenses, but ultimately at year's end, it may or may not play out to that.
Correct, so this is a monthly breakdown and it doesn't factor in equity uh over time, so.
Or tax breaks.
So that's what we're looking at there. This chart here is another way to look at that. So this is actually pulled from the twenty twenty one uh American Community Survey. And on the left, we're looking at rental rates for twenty twenty one and on the right, we're looking at. Uh monthly housing costs. Uh so Lacey is in green in both of these and then I did add the costs for Olympia and Tom Water on both of them as well. So for rental costs, we're actually a little bit higher right now, uh compared to Olympia and Tom Water. And then for housing costs, we're actually a little bit lower, uh as far as monthly costs go. Yeah.
Oh, the other thing I was gonna add to the equity and the tax breaks is the ability to have uh put it down, the uh down payment, the the cash down. That's why we see kind of these rental prices being almost equivalent to a mortgage rate. People can afford that. It's just getting that. That um down payment in place where I mean, I don't know what range is now, three to five, three to five percent or. Some cases, what P M I twenty percent, but and I think too with, I think with veteran. Veteran loans, it's a zero down, so they have a ability to access into that housing market. So there's all those separate pieces that come into in addition to that equity and.
Yeah, lots of pieces.
Yeah, no, no one of these charts really paints the full pictures. Uh one of the the takeaways here, but uh looking at, so specific to uh Lacey over here on the left. Uh this chart actually runs through median household income and then medium family income. So the dark blue is median household income and then the light blue is median family income. So we see that of houses in Lacey, uh the median household income is actually a little bit less. Than the median family income. So that generally suggests that in a house, there are some, you know. Rental arrangements or multiple people, housemates, kind of combination of things living in those homes to get at that lower number and then family homes. Uh generally have a slightly higher uh median family income. This is this is where we start to get into the affordable housing continuum sheet that we're talking about here. So I have a couple more slides that help. Paint that picture. Uh so percent of house households by income, uh so percent of households we have over on the left hand side and then we have different communities. Uh across the bottom there. So for Lacey, uh falling into that uh thirty five thousand and uh dollars a year or less category. Is represented by yellow, so that's that twenty eight percent. Uh moving into that middle range at forty four percent, we have the thirty five thousand to seventy. Five thousand uh a year as far as annual income. And then moving up into the darker or medium blue, I should say royal blue. Uh we have that seventy five to just under a hundred thousand uh a year and then above that is that thirteen percent. Uh what we do see is that we actually have a much or a smaller, I should say, uh yellow category, which is at thirty five thousand or less. Uh by comparison, um. In the uh. Housing report that we have, uh we actually broke that out and actually tried to look at what average incomes are for a range of different positions. So for example, a uh retail clerk uh who's making minimum wage would be right around twenty eight thousand uh a year. Uh administrative assistant would be right around forty one uh thousand a year. Uh a teacher is right around that sixty five thousand, uh registered nurse is right around that seventy thousand. And then military, we have a range of different positions, but a military captain uh would be right around that ninety seven thousand. Uh for wages, so you can kind of see how that breaks out uh within those different brackets.
Wouldn't you attribute Lacey having essentially a higher. Um household income to versus, because it just seems like, you know, whether you work for the state or wherever, you know, you. Just find an area you want to live in, the three cities. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't personally, I don't know if Rick, you have any thoughts on?
I think there's a couple of factors there. Uh we, of course, there's, we have, there's a lot of state employment in this area. We also have the influence a lot of uh personnel. Associated J, right, based on this accord and there, all various different grades of officer staff, but also you have your department defense employees too. And then also where the uh, you know, we write about up against the uh Pierce County border, so we see a lot of the commuters. You know, working in King County, Pierce County, being lived down here, that can also have an effect on that as well, as well as just local um business and all.
Lacey is just closer than maybe Olympia or Tom Water.
Those are just, those are not scientific, those are just.
I was just trying to wrap my head around why it would.
Doesn't it feel like there's a more military community in Lacey than there is in Olympia? It does to me.
It does, there is. It's it's it's, I got, I have those numbers, I think we just, I just for it around, we can send that out to the group, uh to the fine question too. After the meeting is, it does show the number by zip code Thurston County of act uh active duty personnel. It is by a by a large margin.
I was just curious.
The other, the other piece too is, we also have uh, you know, both panorama and Jubilee, which are. Uh active adult communities that people, a lot of people in Jubilee came down from, you know, other parts and and are.
We change our names and move rapidly.
But but we did, that that made a big difference when Jubilee start coming in with household um incomes and those type of things as well.
So this uh next slide uh takes those different essentially groupings uh and breaks it out by area median income. And uh relates that to generally speaking, so somebody who's falls into each one of those categories, how much. Support do they need to afford housing uh within a any given community? So when you fall under that uh thirty percent or lower average median income or area median income. Uh you're gonna need significant support, uh central forum of government, nonprofit organizations, that type of thing to really. Uh afford housing uh within any given community. This isn't necessarily specific to Lacey. We do have some Lacey specific numbers about how many people fall in each one of these categories. Uh over there in the corner and this is getting progressively smaller font, so I apologize for that. Anybody can read that, I'm impressed.
Are you gonna send these out?
Yes, absolutely. So if you all uh have access to these and have, you can spend as much time looking at these numbers as you like. Uh so it's just a really high level review, but we do have these numbers and we'll definitely share them with you. And then moving from left to right, uh as you advance in that area immediate income. Uh the number or the level of support that you need to afford a house uh goes down, so progressively as you hit that. Thirty to fifty percent range, uh significant sport is still generally needed for most types of housing. Government nonprofits are typically where that housing support comes from at that level. Uh and then moving more to the fifty to eighty percent, we see incentives and subsidies needed. Uh and there's uh starting to see more or different types of opportunities of supportive to. Yeah, to support housing, uh that's not purely really reliant on government and nonprofits at that stage. But you start to see other programs out there that become available that folks can apply for and use to really afford housing. And then as you move farther over, uh support subsidies needed in some markets, not necessarily all, so depending on where you live. Housing is just more expensive. So depending on where you're at, uh those subsidies may or not be needed and then as you. Go uh above that market rents and homeownership uh is really kind of that set your market rate, so there's not a whole lot of programs that are really. Designed for that tier. And then this is where we get into the affordable housing continuum. So I broke this out into a couple of different sections, just to make it a little bit more. Consumable and you all should have a printout of this, but there's still a lot of content in there, so we'll uh we'll go slow. So this is essentially just another way to look at that last slide that we're, we had there and a breakdown of the different types of demographics. Kind of, and this is very general, fall into each one of these categories. So moving uh from left to right again, housing types, uh on on the far left hand of the spectrum, you typically see the. Unsheltered uh supportive housing, uh public housing, section uh eight vouchers. And then as you move across, you start to see more of the uh. Low market rentals, uh naturally occurring affordable housing, workforce housing, which I know has been a topic as of late. And then as you progress farther, you start to see that market rate, uh higher rental uh homeownership uh category. And then each down below there, you see the household income, which we just kind of ran through, so based on the. Uh area median income, kind of where you fall into there, uh typically what you'll be able to afford uh before. Any kind of subsidies or other supports are not factored into the equation. And then housing cost burden uh is just another way to look at it. So this is, these numbers, I believe, are specific to City of Lacey as of twenty twenty one. Uh so when we see the seventy five percent cost burden, uh sixty five percent severe uh cost burden. I guess that one starts from county, so the the household income is Lacey specific and then the housing cost burden is Thurston County. But it is local numbers as a point of reference, so you can kind of track that across. Anything to add on this one? We'll just keep keep moving into the the next sections here.
This is a really good handout. This has a lot of information.
There's a lot in there. This makes sense. Yeah, the more you cross your eyes that you can see.
And the whole idea was it was trying to convey, just as houses going through is. Where where are the columns fit to be most effective and what are the roles of the different players in housing development, where their roles are and where their specialties are.
And so this slide here is running through the strategies and you you all have it in printout and then we also have it in digital copies, so. It might be easier to zoom in on that, if that text is getting a little bit small, but uh. This is a range of different strategies that really seek to address each one of those different demographics or brackets as far as. Uh where folks land, so uh and then it's broken out, it's color coded to some degree as well, which. Helps with the graphic, but still there's a lot in there. So uh again, um at one of the spectrum, we have things like uh. Permanent supportive housing, uh and then as you move across, you start to see things like rental subsidies. Uh and then other strategies like zoning uh changes and then community land trusts, uh residential ownership. Uh cooperative ownership. Different strategies that you can employ depending on which demographic you're trying to reach. So nice thing about that is that you can really, based on where the biggest need is. And where the largest demographics are in any given community, you can really pair that with which program really seeks to address that demographic well. And provide housing, so. Some of the things within Lacey that we've looked at is uh acquisition of lots for partnerships, affordability, opportu- uh. Opportunities, implementation of the Housing Action Plan. There's a lot of different uh actions within there that really seek to address a lot of these different. Categories, so uh provide funding for renovation and maintaining existing housing that serves low income households uh or residents with disabilities. Uh partner with local trade schools to provide renovation and retrofit services for low income households as part of uh on the job training. Um there's a whole range of different uh opportunities and uh recommendations within the Housing Action Plan that really outline. Uh both the strategy, but then ways to accomplish each one of those that really pair up well with this graphic as far as. Uh where the biggest need is and then what are some strategies to fit it that are out there, so it's a great resource there. Um and then we also have a whole host of potential actions listed within that, so. I'm not gonna read all of them to you today, but uh we can definitely share that around again. Um because there's a lot of great resources in there. The A D U program was one of the ones that we're really working on lately that was listed in there. Uh so a lot of good stuff like that. And then this last slide is uh identifies uh the general funders. Uh and what groups that they really address and then potential partnerships that exist out there. And given this is pretty general, uh but. Depending on uh what group we're really targeting or seeking to address, uh where that those funding sources and partners might come from. And that's actually the end of this presentation. So does anybody have any questions immediately? And again, we're gonna be circulating all this around, so you'll have it and have an opportunity to really dig in and. See some of that small font, for sure.
No surprise I have a question or two, but um so the multifamily, I just to be clear. Most of our, is any of our multifamily in Lacey other than apartment complexes or is it even a discernible percentage that is not apartment complexes?
So that answer, I don't, uh what I can say multifamily, so I should say moderate density residential. Is not explicitly uh apartments or that style of development. Uh there's townhomes, uh smaller kind of narrow lot. Uh style development is a lot of times what you see from when you're uh moderate density residential, so uh. Maybe one or two or two or three story even style developments relatively narrow, uh smaller lots than what you might find on a single family. Um a lot of our moderate density uh zoning code is written really. Towards that style of housing and then if you look at uh more uh more multifamily, higher density. Uh apartment style developments, there's actually a design review and a range of other codes that. Uh dig farther into that to really make sure that that style of development is not only consistent with moderate density. Areas, but then also oftentimes uh low density, which you see relatively intermingled. Uh and the next presentation actually goes into that, so.
And even with the multifamily units, the complexes, there's different types of complexes. Uh there's the the garden style apartments where you see like the mark apartments that just went in. There's the garden style apartments where you see like the Mark apartments that just went in next to River Ridge. Or you basically have your interior parking lodge, and you have your multiple buildings with eight or twelve units in, depending on design, two or three story. Then you also now we're seeing a little bit of the urban, we call them urban, more urban multifamily or the walkups where you have like over here in Sixth Avenue where it's more of a big shoes building with a ground floor retail space, but your vertical stack. We're seeing more of those.
They're all rentals though, right?
Yes, yes, so far.
There's not, I think that's kind of where you were headed, right, is how much of that high density development has any opportunity for ownership?
Well, right now, in that type of product and design, you really have to get into a condo arrangement, and those are the things that we, we struggle with in the state of Washington, especially in the lower market areas, lower cost market areas. Is this legislature work on trying to perform condo liability laws? And so trying to find, folks are willing to take that risk with the, the current land margins. We've seen some more interest in condos, people want to do condos, but haven't seen any coming to fruition. And then, of course, you also have in that, the, there's a project we did recently, or was done recently, last couple of years, it was more of a duplex neighborhood. Was moderate density, but that was a different style of multifamily in a sense. We don't really consider duplex a true multifamily unit, but the way they did the project, they made that their minimum, it made them to make units to the acre by doing that style of subdivision.
The duplex is generally just one person owns it and rents out half of it.
Typically, in this particular case, I mean, let me back up a bit. In this particular case, I think the, the lots are all owned by one person and so far, but they're individual lots that they can be sold off. And then we also have townhouse development that just went in, Liberica Estates, that, you know, to some purposes, looks like an individual ownership townhome. But they're all, it's basically a multifamily project, they're all rentals, one parcel, and they just designed it to look like a townhouse.
What, what's across on Driton Parkway, that's this, I think it might be three story flat top.
Right there at Gateway Boulevard at the intersection?
Yeah.
That's another multifamily project owner. But that's, that's the challenge, I think, of which we spurred this conversation, is how do we get more ownership of these units and, and opportunity for ownership and, and versus all being rentals? And that's, that's one of the big gaps in our market is we have the single family cash models going at a brilliant, just hitting four hundred thousand dollars on, on every sale price or unit sale price. And already have the rental market, and there's not a lot that's being produced today, it's in between. And that's kind of where this housing continuum graphic shows, this is developed to kind of convey what's in on Housing Action Plan on the various strategies and how they would align with those various needs. One of the pieces for ownership was identifying the type of partners or funders or strategies, so community land trust, residential ownership, cooperative ownership, and then the partners being those affordable housing developers. Really only have one entity currently, or historically in this area, that did single family homes for lower income. That was Habitat for Humanity. That is Habitat, but we just now have a new group coming out, the Thurston County Land Trust, that's just formed in the last year. And they're starting to try to develop funding channels so they can start creating more housing or preserve housing for the global ownership too. So there's, there's things that come in the market, but again, it's not keeping this pace with the market rate development of both your multifamily as well as your single family developments.
So just honestly, some of my concern is you're showing there's not a lot of land, and so it will, as, as we consider, you know, land use changes and things, we're moving away from any opportunity to have some intermediary, intermediary housing that is ownership available. And I'm not sure any of this is making rents affordable. And so from the, you know, trying to make rents affordable, these are coming in high end apartments that are expensive and difficult for people at these lower median incomes to even afford. So I'm not sure we're getting enough units to make it affect the affordable housing piece. And so that's just some of my concerns. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it's making a difference for us. It's just more, more rental units at really high rents.
Yeah, I think there was something of some of the information in there too, was I thought was interesting where in, in the county, we had the highest or almost the highest rental costs. But home affordability in a sense for those that can afford a home was the lowest. And now I thought that was an interesting two stats, I kind of like, well, that's, that's.
Do you think the highest rental cost is, is somewhat swayed by the recency of multifamily construction, therefore their newer units, therefore they're more expensive to build, more expensive to rent?
Yep.
I, I think too, you know, we mentioned JBLM earlier, you should look at the JBLM housing allowances at some point. That's another thing that maybe we could provide is, you know, the, so, you know, all the active duty, they get the housing allowance based on, you know, the, the areas, you know, what it costs to live here, and it's substantial. And, and landlords know what that number is, so they often read to that, which is higher than market. So, so the, the housing allowance is higher than market.
It's very clear, if, if you drive some of those little older streets, they're off Golf Club. The, the parking is huge there because four, five, six people are sharing a three bedroom house. And are not necessarily family, they're just sharing a house.
Yeah, and, you know, get, to get back to Daphne's point, you know, you look at what the strategies are, the funders and the partners for those that are providing for more affordable units. There's not a lot here in terms of like what the city can do to build or to incentivize more units. I mean, and, you know, those things that the city can do is like the zoning changes, well, we've done the low density zone consolidation to really, you know, free up more units in the low density zones. We've upped the zoning minimums and maximums in our moderate density. We went from six to twelve in moderate to eight to sixteen. We went in, in high density, we went from six to twenty to twelve plus. So there is no maximum density and high density. So, you know, those things that, you know, we've got the ADU program, that's already been mentioned, we do, we've got so much that the, the city can do. We've, we're, you know, other than trying to affect the supply or, or kind of stock. And so we're, you know, de- dealing a lot and working with our other, you know, regional partners that can provide, you know, section eight vouchers, or, you know, those kinds of things that, that the city can't.
We have talked for years about this condominium problem. Is there someone who, I mean, not tonight, but is there someone who can explain the vagaries of the state condominium law and why it is so difficult to build?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I generally just know it's a, it's a liability issue, and it's a liability issue that had, I mean, we can, we could certainly bring somebody out.
Yeah, and it would be interesting to, to know because.
It's a liability for the builder, that they have a certain number of years until they are free of that.
Oh, okay.
It's a unending liability claim. And so we have like, there's the higher market, condos are being built in Seattle, but your values are, they're different, and plus you have these folks that are very experienced in those, those, those cost margins, it's hard for somebody locally to try to set up a condominium. And of course, I've been, like, been a few years, I've been kind of getting a, a good sense of what exactly it is, what would be the fix? Kind of liability laws, and simply to find some information, we can get that over here.
You've got to find that spot where it was a liability change.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that is.
Yeah.
But you don't want not to be, have liability for some period of time.
Right.
Because you would expect.
But the challenge is, those liabilities aren't the same for a single family.
A single family home versus a condo.
Right, and that, that's, that's, you know, again, it's that whole, you know, differences between these two product models. Going back to your point about, you know, not, not seeing more ownership opportunities or anything like that going forward. That's why we want to put the, the chart in there about what is their overall unit mix? And we do have quite a bit of homeownership, it's just unfortunately it's not accessible today because we're not getting movement in the market. We're so buried by the how many, what the month supply of houses for sale. And, and so we're kind of moving, losing that inward mobility to create more space. And so, but we're not going, as Ryan said, we're not going to be in a position to be able to produce more units to change that market than that dynamic. That, that's something that we can't really do, nor do we have Miami area to do so with. But we want us want to show that, that chart, just kind of show where we were in overall unit mix compared to other Thurston County cities. Going forward, you'll see Thurston or town waters mix change because they only had like six thousand single family homes, I believe it was, and a fairly little number of multifamily, that twenty percent of their homes is stock. But they have a lot of opportunity for development out there for single family. That's going to be the next wave of development that we, we've experienced over the last twenty years. I, I project, and plus we also have more corporate growth area still.
Every time I ride my bike down there, there's a.
But also too, we have the corporate growth area, and that's not counted in this, and that's going to be another place where there'll be more single family homes. Again, though, we don't know where they're going to come in on the market, they're all being developed by four market builders, trying to figure out how we either support or, or develop these more, these developers that are more focused on the low income or affordable housing models like Habitat, Constitution Land, or the land trust, those type of things is, is kind of where we'll see that market kind of change.
Well, that's why I wonder if we consider zoning changes, do we want to do that where we're influencing the affordability of housing by, you know, somebody that was going to come in and make some more affordable housing versus more high rent, you know, kind of for profit situations. It's, and I don't know, it, it's like, I think that's kind of out of our, out of our swim lane, but I don't know, it's, I just, I feel like we're, we're moving past any opportunity, and it'll be the deal. If we have three hundred acres left of where we can influence ownership, that's not a lot.
Well, I would, you know, even suggest though, because that's a very important point you made. But then again, if you don't make some changes and get different types of units, you know, like I know if I know in the market, like work, live units and those type of things, they're still rentals. But also if you don't do anything, what are you gaining if they develop in the current single family market as well? Are you maximizing units? Or, you know, how do you preserve that, that ability? So it's a tough situation.
It's a quandary, yeah, I, I agree, but.
Building six one.
Yeah, that isn't solid either. It doesn't fix it, but nor do more high rate apartments fix it. So like, yeah, it's just like, can we get a inexpensive cottage style homes or row houses or something that could be affordability or entry level, but.
Well, developers and builders are using the system, not are necessarily the city system. They're using the system of what the market will bear and what the expectation of the consumer is out there for the product that they're selling. Granite countertops, this type of this, this type of ranges, this, it's all part of the market and that's certainly not something we can control, but.
Isn't it amazing how home and garden channel really changed our, our.
I mean, you don't have gas ranges. I mean, you don't have gas ranges.
No.
Fireplay.
No for my counter top.
Yeah, it's those kind of things that are. But they have a location around the public is they want to maximize what they're going to get. So. Very challenging. Okay, any other questions on residential land?
This is a good conversation.
I mean, that was fun in this conversation.
I just think that the conversation should continue. The plan should continue. Talking about because it's not going to have to solve overnight, but we got to figure out new strategies.
Yeah, the Housing Action Plan and the Horrible Housing Strategy do highlight quite a few different uh. Avenues, I guess, that seek to address some of these challenges. So not to say that any one of them is going to fix everything, but. There are some great strategies and recommendations out there that have been really well uh researched and really kind of come through to really make sure that they fit. Our kind of area and really right size for Lacey and Thurston County and the communities in general, so. Some good stuff in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We will move on to old business and Carpenter Road rezone project twenty two dash forty five.
Well, just keep that up. I just. But you all know, I I ordered you the spreadsheet that shows the uh GBLM uh.
Which is now.
Yeah. It's all different types. It's uh active duty, retiree, families, um and contractors. And I highlighted the zip codes that correspond to lazy and they're not perfect. There's some of those that have areas outside, but not much.
All right. So after David's introduction, I don't know that I can do any better, but. Yeah, I think that their company was originally based on some airport.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Action of some form or another. I'm not not entirely sure of the origin of that. Yeah. But the first couple of slides I'm going to skip through, these are ones that we've seen before that just really helps get oriented as far as where the site lands. Uh, current zoning conditions, uh, some street views, aerial views. Uh, this slide we already hit on. Uh, we did this one as well. Um, and these two is are exactly the thing you're not supposed to put in a presentation is a lot of words. But uh, it is a lot, a list of the residential goals, the infill goals, uh, and then also uh. Also the Tanglewild Thompson Planning Area Goals from Land Use and Housing Elements, the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, these were included in the staff report, but they really just kind of identify. How this project fits within the stated goals and actions of both uh the ha- housing elements and the land use element of the comprehensive plan. Uh, where they align uh. Yeah, so anytime that a proposal comes forward, it needs to mesh up well with the comprehensive plan. So one of the things that we do is we come through the plan and. See how it blends with whatever the proposal is. And if there are issues, those are typically addressed. Um, so I'm not going to go too much into detail on these ones. Um, this is a slide that was borrowed from the last presentation that should look relatively familiar. Uh, what we did here is, so this is again the current status, uh, buildable acres, a breakdown of undeveloped. And redevelopment potential uh before and then after uh we add those or swap, I should say. So we pulled those five acres from the low density residential and moved them over to the moderate density. Um, there's it's a. Pretty minimal change on the charts. You can see that the uh the pie chart also moves a little bit. So we have that sixty three percent. Low density and then the twenty two percent moderate density. And then when that switch happens, uh, we did drop down to sixty two point four. Uh, low density and twenty two point six. So there's really.
I can see where you're going with that. It's five acres.
I had to go back and forth several times, just kind of.
So it is a change. Uh, it is a difference. Uh, it is moving undeveloped acres from one to another. Uh, so that's not to be overlooked by any stretch, but uh that is kind of comparatively to the available land that's out there. Where that falls. This next slide uh goes into details really on the intent of moderate density residential. Uh, so talking about more of the uh uh the style of moderate density and what that looks like uh in practice. Um, and then it compares it. So setbacks, maximum height, and then building coverage. Uh, so moderate density residential really uh. The intent of that is to permit a greater variety of housing types than are currently offered within low density residential districts. Uh, means of achieving more economic housing, uh generally located along arterials and collectors. Uh, increasing opportunities for mass transit, uh also located in areas where public sewer uh is currently available. Those are all things that would, as far as moderate and moving even up into high density, those are the types of zones that. Are seem to be a good fit for that type of development because those uh city resources are already there and in place and can accommodate that style of. Uh, development. And then so as far as setbacks, I highlighted actually the ones and this is tiny font again, so. Uh, the really, the only difference is as far as low density and moderate density, uh where those changes exist. Uh, in the code as it currently is written. So within moderate density residential, the minimum front yard. Uh, setback is ten feet versus in low density at sixteen feet. So when you see that higher density style or moderate density style development. Uh, they tend to uh move a little bit closer to the road because they're a little bit more of an urban environment. They're designed to have more of that interaction. With the road, um, the street, uh, minimum side yards, uh, both are five uh. Moving forward, when we look at locating multifamily within moderate density, that setback actually bumps up to fifteen. Uh, so that's one thing to pay attention to there. And then the only other difference is maximum development coverage. Uh, for moderate density residential, uh seventy five percent. And for low density residential, it's sixty five percent. So that's your building coverage and also your pathways, your driveways, things like that. To add up to that impervious surface thing that you're looking at. Uh, one note that we will hit later, uh multifamily developments. Of two acres or greater. So this one that we're looking at is a five acre site um. Must provide at least uh twenty percent of the gross site area for common open space purposes. So that is not necessarily a requirement in low density, single family style developments, but when you do move into that. Moderate density and you look to place a multifamily style development there, that does come with additional requirements as far as open space, as far as setbacks. As far as uh retention of trees. Um, so this is actually a. Quick overview of the site plan review, and that actually gets to the other sheet that I sent you there, which is a flow chart um. Of the full administrative review, which is in short, what a multifamily development would have to go through in order to be granted the right. To locate in a moderate density residential. So. Multifamily in itself actually isn't even permitted outright within moderate density. There's some additional requirements there that they have to navigate in order to really. Be mean consistent with the code. And a lot of that has to do with uh adjacent uses. So making sure that. Whatever's proposed really is compatible with the different uses and it's not a extreme difference or a pretty harsh. Transition from one to the other. So it's really a lot of what this emphasizes is paying attention to transitions and buffers and setbacks and. Really the overall neighborhood character. So. Just because you have low density and moderate density, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not cohesive. Or that they aren't required to develop in a way that blends the transition well. The design criteria and review. So this is actually, there's a specific uh. Section within our code, uh, design criteria for multifamily projects, condominiums and townhouses. So that would be the section of our code that really. Currently speaks to what we believe is proposed, given this is still a reason. So we don't have. Any kind of plans or idea of what's going to be out there. But if we look forward and try to anticipate what's likely to land out there. This is a range of codes that really specifically seeks to address that type of development when you're looking to locate it within moderate density. Uh, and the two sections that are actually highlighted, um, so there's a lot of different requirements in there, but privacy in relationship to adjacent sites. And then developments adjacent to single family areas. So these are just a few of the bullets that we pulled out from there, but there are specific sections that really do. Describe this uh scenario and really outline steps that you would have to meet to really make sure that any. Proposed development remains uh compatible and isn't really kind of that harsh transition is what we're trying to get away from. So that one really does blend into the other. So you do start to see requirements like additional setbacks, uh requirement for. Crime prevention through environmental design techniques. So as far as sightlines and kind of open spaces and areas and. Site barriers, things like that are all things that are addressed within the section of the code that really speak to kind of pay attention to the types of developments that you might encounter in a multifamily environment. And a single family style environment and really where that transition is and really spends time thinking about what that looks like.
Oh, Hans, um, can you go back maybe just a slide or two? And I want to touch on, yeah, one more. On this, the the middle part of the right hand side talks about height. And one of the things you heard about was, you know, concern over compatibility when it comes to things like height. I don't want to have, you know, people looking into my backyard, those kinds of things. You'll notice that with modern density residential, it's forty feet. With low density residential, it's thirty five. So it's only a difference of five feet between the two zones. The difference is when you have two low density zones next to each other, there are no compatibility requirements. Like I can build a thirty five foot tall house and my neighbor and look into my neighbor's backyard with no requirements. What Hans is showing is that with that additional five feet comes a lot of additional responsibility on on behalf of the developer. To make sure that that development is compatible with the adjacent single family residential. So things like. There's uh requirements for the number of windows that you can have adjacent. There's requirements for landscaping and a. A physical barrier between the sites and those kinds of things. So so um, you know, we we get a lot. So this was kind of reminiscent of that panorama rezone once upon a time, right? And so we get a lot of concerns that there, these aren't compatible. Um, but when you look at it, really for an additional five feet of height. There are so many more mitigation measures that a developer has to do when they're adjacent to a single family residential, that a single family to single family does not. So just keep that in mind. Those things that Hans is bringing is bringing up are those things that are are designed to to kind of soften and then transition between the. The multifamily and the single family.
And to that also, the the exterior uh cladding of the wall, the any multifamily, there is modulation in that. So it's not. Uh, one flat surface, but there are requirements about kind of different depths and different textures and ways to really soften that further. So you're not necessarily just turning around your yard and seeing this big expanse of something. There's definitely uh. Requirements in there to really kind of break up that experience. So it's it's more dynamic than that.
Can I ask a question?
For sure.
Okay, so I'm thinking, I I'm just thinking aloud here. So if they, if one side is an entrance on these buildings, right? And one side is the backside, does the backside have to be to the residential?
It does not.
No, so you. Through a process, I don't know what that process. You could say we would, we would allow something like this if the ones that are adjacent to the. Who's next door to the single family homes, you could. Maybe say that has to be the entrance to those apartments from that side.
It could be. I mean, you you get into, you know, site design things that we would handle through uh through the review process.
Get some exercise. It'd be an exercise program.
But yeah, I I was just going to mention that too. Typically, then you get parking areas instead of, you know, on the side of where the the building entrances are. Then it's, you know, are you trying to. Buffer from, you know, a vehicle noise and and headlights and those kinds of things and.
I wasn't thinking putting parking on that. I was thinking on the ends and have people walk in.
So those are certainly things we talked about, what we talked, yeah.
If we're trying, if if that that is a big. Goal, you know, like people are looking in on my, you know, home.
We certainly have those discussions at the project level, but that's not something that we can.
No, no, I realize that, but I mean.
And that's another, so this slide is uh really the difference between low density and moderate density residential. When you start to. And that's really where we're at today as far as a rezone goes. Uh, and then the next step, provide, if that rezone were to go through, the next step would be a. Potential proposal that they would come back with, uh, that would include a lot of uh. Elements that would then have to address uh that multifamily element, which is in addition to moderate density. So there's a lot of additional uh.
That's where you get down to technical.
So there's a lot of other and. Yeah, so the sensitivity in regard to building setbacks, massing of structures, spacing between buildings, scale of buildings. Uh, proportions and building materials uh shall all be observed when placing developments adjacent to single family detached neighborhoods. So there's a lot more sway that we have uh to really make sure that these things are being addressed when a multifamily specifically style development is being applied for. Within a moderate density zone. Um, and then this one I attempted, so given we don't have any plans, uh, we don't have any designs or under. Uh, don't know what that future proposal might look like if it were to come. Um, but depending on the orientation and. It's a little bit bigger on that screen, so that might be all right. Um, so on the uh left, we have the low density residential and given. We don't know the orientation of any building in either one of these scenarios, but there would be a scenario where there's. A residential unit that's built within five feet of one of those property lines. So they really could snug up pretty close to that property line. There's not a whole lot of uh oversight that we have as far as provided they're consistent with the zoning system with the code. It's not a whole lot of uh sway that we would have over that decision. Whereas in moderate density residential, if. A multifamily development were proposed, uh, there's a increased setback on top of the one that's already there. There's uh additional requirements for open space. There's additional requirements for the types of vegetation to really soften that and also create a visual and physical buffer. Between those two units. So there's a lot more say that we get to have uh as far as making sure that those two different. Developments are uh compatible with each other.
I'll just mention too, um, this really hasn't gotten brought up through the process much, but um you'll notice there's a twenty five foot. Um, tract there between Aldia Glen and um on the north side of Aldia Glen, on the south side of this property. I think that's a tract that's owned by the Aldia Glen Homeowners Association. So the idea was that, but you know, to buffer what was eventually going to come there. Then you have an an additional fifteen feet to the north there. So you essentially have a forty foot. Area between that and when a potential building could, um, you know, back a building could be. And that's, um, you know, so that's and that's to the property lines. So you're you're probably, if that's forty feet, probably have another, you know, thirty or. Twenty five or so thirty feet. So you're looking at, you know, seventy feet back of building to back of building between the the potential multifamily to the north, to the single family to the south.
And the east side of the property.
Uh, the east side, um.
That's more.
Twenty five foot continue on the east side of the property between the.
So the open space one does not. That's only to the south. Uh, to the east, it's the single family uh lots do go directly up to the parcel. So there's not that gap from the open space side, but there are still requirements for additional setbacks. When multifamily is proposed in an area that's directly adjacent to single family style development. Uh, another thing that we see here is that uh when you. Have a multifamily development, we did hit on this a little bit, that's above that two acre uh size. So this one being a five acre. They do have that twenty percent gross site area requirement for open space. Uh, which single family style development or low density style development, that would not be part of that requirement. So. Two other things that I did want to hit on here is that within the low density residential, as far as the site access, how things are currently laid out. Uh, off of. Uh, Carpenter Road there. It's a, it's a very uh tight corner that you see as far as current access. So that would need to be. Really explored in greater depths and. I don't, I don't know that I have a solution to how to how to navigate that one. Uh, in a moderate fam- or multifamily development style, there's definitely. Uh, requirements to share driveways and combine access uh when you're uh going out to Carpenter uh. And with this applicant also owning the site to the north, that opportunity is increased as far as a shared driveway and. A more of a consistent access to that. Uh, and then utilities being in the road already. Um, bringing utilities in to provide services in there. That's a another kind of opportunity as far as higher density uses go.
You know, and all these things that Hans bringing up, um, are things we talked with um Jeff Powell about at the onset of his application when we were looking at this, you know, he. He really wanted to get the most out of it that he could. And we said, well, we really need to provide a a transition between, you know, the the more kind of. Higher density, harder commercial area to the north that is Martin Way to that to the south. And so e- even if you look across the west. Um, there's, I think it's called the Park subdivision. That is moderate density residential as well. So. There's moderate density on the other side of the street as well. So it provides that good transition to, yeah, so. Um, you know, this is, this is moderate density here. So you can see that, you know, if this was moderate density, that these areas are moderate density. These are more commercial. These are. Such a business district zones and then the zones that are along along Martin Way. He would have loved to have a Martin Way zone there. And we said, you know, I we just. Don't don't think that's going to fly. It's going to have to be something that's a little bit more, you know, kind of in the middle. And so that's where we landed with this moderate density zone. And, you know, it had a lot of those advantages that that Hans talked about, you know, the the transit, the utilities, the access and those kinds of things that. That, you know, we were supportive of initially to, you know, get him to this point in the process.
So to clarify on Kirian's question, though, on the east side, then there's only going to be a fifteen foot buffer, correct?
That's correct. Yep. So you can see that green swath that runs on the south property line that that. Terminates on that eastern property line. So um those folks that the backup of that cul-de-sac on that east side, it would, it would be fifteen feet. Um, same with the property. There's a side property line there for a one lot off, albeit for Aldia Glen that would also have that fifteen foot.
My cursor does not work. Yeah, and that's the minimum. And there are other vegetation requirements. Uh, there's other access and pathway requirements, things like that. So. For example, if they're interested in maybe putting like a perimeter path in there, they actually need to get uh written consent from the adjacent property owners that. Really do have a say and can be involved in that uh discussion and uh process. So there's a lot of stuff in there that's really kind of guide that development. Uh, if it were to be proposed.
Ryan, remember uh the property over. They were going to put some. Screaming on the decks.
That's a requirement of high density residential. And that's different because that's an eighty foot height.
Yeah.
And so we, that's actually a code requirement, but the planning commission changed the or recommended to the council that ultimately changed the code to require. Opaque decks adjacent. This is a different zone that doesn't have those requirements. But certainly is something that through the project review could be required as, you know, as a condition of approval or. You know, something along those lines. It's it's not, it's not a hard and fast code requirement for this. So and again, remember, it's only a five foot difference between. Those zones. So we have to consider what's um. Appropriate for that level of of transition between a zone that only has five foot of height difference.
Believe that there's also a point system as part of that, that there's a range of different styles of uh. Options, I should say, out there, including decks and other uh ways to blend or blend that public private space. And there are requirements on anything that could be proposed that's facing a a single family style development. So there there's whether they would elect to use one of those options or the other. Uh, those are recommendations that are out there and those are kind of spelled out as far as how you would go about accomplishing that if you wanted to do that style of development.
That's right. Mentioned, you know, in terms of adjacent zoning, adjacent joint zonings. With a low density zoning classification, moderate density is that. Transition zone or most compatible zone next to each other because of the bulky and size rebalances within it and get more density. It's a minimum of eight, that would maximum of the low density six. And you, your massing is very similar in the heights and such too. So there there are some different trade offs. The difference, the difference we talked about earlier was the parking rules, parking dynamics a little bit different. So you want to. You know, make your screen and and make sure those are adjacent, those those pieces, but the codes are set up to reflect that.
So. The the low density allows, is it six units per acre?
Correct, yeah.
So this is a five acre property. So in theory, they could just today go in there and build thirty houses. And they could be thirty five feet tall and all those people in Aldia Glen would have.
Good options.
No, but no opportunity to do anything about it, right? Whereas making it moderate density, as Hans was saying, there's a lot more. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
That's correct. You're a hundred percent.
They could put thirty houses in there tomorrow and probably some. Design review and that kind of stuff, but certainly nothing that would prevent them from being really bad neighbors.
That's right. Hey. Is that the end of your presentation? So so you know, the purpose of this is to obviously to have a discussion and question and answer what you you've done. The the. You know, recommendation from staff is is a, you know, for the planning commission to recommend approval of this to the to the council. So it's up to your guys' deliberation tonight. Um, hopefully to be able to make a recommendation to council and then this would go forward as part of the annual slated comprehensive plan amendments here in the next month or so.
I have a couple more questions. Um, first, I apologize for missing the last meeting, but um the public hearing, but. Looking through the minutes, it looks like there was one member of the public that spoke. Um, opposed to the project, but the minutes only say that she was opposed for several reasons. I wonder if we've covered. What her concerns were in this.
And that's what we've tried to do with the presentation, so.
I just prefer to applying commission members to what they heard from the testimony. Can you share it to what they what they took away from what that person said versus what we talked about tonight?
Didn't feel her comments were as material as to some of the issues that we already discussed. So I think they were. More uh. Based on her misunderstanding of what was going on versus a true reflection of whether she agreed or didn't agree with the zoning change.
There's even, there was even, she even didn't like the idea of the bus stop, remember?
Yeah.
Because um. It was by her house.
Yes, there was already a bus stop.
There's something about the bus stop. The bus stop was a side comment of this little piece that's. The bus stop was a side comment of this little piece that's there that's.
That little.
Oh, yeah.
And they, they, it was brought up, well, we could make that a bus stop or something. It was just a side comment by the developer. Uh, but it was a non-issue.
Um, so the other, the other question from the, um, from the minutes was it, it looked like. The Aldia Glen HOA and Jeff had a meeting that looked, just from what I could discern from the minutes. Like it was very well received. Is that, am I characterizing that correctly? Like, it looks like they're, they're both. I know the HOA isn't the individual homeowners, but at least the HOA, um. Didn't seem to have a big objection to Jeff's approach.
Yeah, so Hans and I met directly with, with Jeff and the HOA president and treasurer. Um, and they did not have a, a lot, they, they, they were very happy with the current development that was happening there. They had some concerns about. They want, definitely wanted a fence along there, which is, you know, we've talked about would be required anyways and. And, you know, we're, we're generally concerned with a, a tree retention along the property line. Obviously, they've got that twenty five foot buffer tract. In there that they're concerned about. Um, they're also talking about doing some property swaps and some things. There's a little triangle that Aldia Glen owns. That's along Carpenter and they're talking about maybe, you know, looking at getting rid of. So it, my impression was it was positive. It was good. It was, they were. You know, happy to be able to have the opportunity to talk directly with the developer about potential project there and. Um, I don't know if we're gone out to the rest of the HOA. Um, we were certainly talking to two people there and they were hard to get a hold of in the first place. So, um, you know, that, that don't speak for the entire neighborhood, but you know, we also posted the, a sign at the site. We sent mail notice to within three hundred feet of, you know, the, the application. And so, you know, we, we're trying to do our best to try to get the word out. And um, and that's all that, that we got was that one person at the hearing.
There was one email.
The email that where the person seemed very confused about what the project.
Yeah, right.
And, and I, and. The sense of people I think is, I moved in here, I bought this house because it had this nice section of trees behind it. And I never expected those to go away, which I think is basically unrealistic, but um. You, you know, I think they're better off with a moderate density development there with the restrictions and rules. And guidelines that are available, rather than him selling this property to someone who's going to build sixty homes there.
Right.
You know, I think the alternative is not, let's have a nice forest there forever. Someone's going to buy that land and build on it.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's going to be developed regardless.
It's gonna be developed.
We're, I think people that have lived there are very lucky that it still hasn't been. It was in private ownership. Both of those were in private ownership. There's that, that historic house that Jeff talked about there that. Um, it hadn't been developed for, for a long, um, it really never been developed. It was kind of, you know, in a. It was a very similar, you know, situation, all kind of dilapidated, somewhat historic house, so yeah.
Yeah, so I guess our toolbox grows, I guess, is the messaging there to uh. Navigate that type of a proposal. As far as how we can be involved and a- address a lot of those concerns uh that are raised because they are there and they are valid. Um, but we have a lot more opportunity in that zoning designation to really make sure that those concerns are addressed. Whereas in the lower density, we don't have as much really tools at our disposal to address those.
But just a comment, I would like any future zoning request changes to consider. Uh, making housing either more affordable or providing more ownership opportunities. And so. I recognize this is only five acres, but I think we have a very limited number of five acre parcels. In which we can make a difference for the future of Lacey. And so I think that's what I would have liked to have seen. That this addressed affordability, which it does not, and it doesn't address ownership either. So it doesn't address, I think, the two ends of the spectrum that I think are most meaningful for our community. We need to make rents or mortgages more affordable. So we can take people up the street and give them a place to live, or we also need to allow them to get into ownership where they can provide for their future. Um, through equity and tax breaks and, you know, some sort of nest egg when they're, when they're, you know, old like me. But I would like to see any zoning changes really hit those two, and I felt this didn't. And it's just five acres, I understand that. But I think it's a planning commission, that's our role and your great presentation. We don't have many opportunities to make those decisions anymore, and I really think we need to capitalize on every time we can make one of those decisions. And I felt this came to us as a, something that was just needing to be done and was going to be simple. And I know I put up a lot of questions for this and I respect that you guys have been really good about that, but I felt. The recommendation was, didn't consider those things, so.
But how, how do we, how do we do that with zoning though? Isn't it just a, isn't it just, it, it's one zone or the other? I mean, can, can we do it conditionally?
No, because we got the rules in place. But where we do do this is continue to have this conversation on the policy level. Uh, we have the housing action plan that was just recently adopted by council, the planning commission recommended, developed with the regional coordination. Implementation some of those measures, keep track of those implementations and, and you know, again, because some of those things. Uh, will require resources to do. And so that's where we have to work with the planning commission, or not, at the council. About priorities and implementation strategies as well as work program limits for the, you know, new policy development. And then as we continue to work on this, these topics, keep it fresh, so that we're going to be doing a twenty twenty five update. There's another opportunity for a full comp plan update, what's its policy vision, what are the needs, are we making any progress on some of the implementation of these type of pieces? And then, um, I think if we do get any additional, because we, we can't control if somebody wants to come in and submit a comp plan amendment, application. To look at a redesignation and ultimate rezone, but I think we kind of set a, a nice, uh, um. You know, track record now with the presentation that Hans put together where it shows those, those data and, and we can track these five acre, it's just, you know. We gotta be able to monitor that continual data as well in the meantime, but it's going to be tough. It's going to have to be focused on continuing having this conversation. And then trying to implement these measures that we've identified in the housing action plan as ways to uh, um, self-support. That lower income, uh, support those lower income households. And pressure on the legislature about calling a reform.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion to uh. Move this forward to council. From low, um. Recent of the low density residential to moderate density rent. There's somebody who wants to make the motion.
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
Can I abstain? I'm not comfortable moving it forward, but I understand the direction of where we're going. Is that appropriate for me to do so? Voting?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed or you wanted it recorded as?
I'm, I'm not opposed necessarily to this one. I'm just.
She's making her.
I'm, I guess I'm making a point of the process and I was frustrated by the process and I don't think we gave the due diligence to making housing affordable. Or providing ownership of top opportunities.
And what that will do is it will be the question of why the abstention, so we can put that to the council that deserve these concerns. And part of the carrying the, the obligation for.
So it's uh.
I one hundred percent echo that is concerned that affordable housing and affordable housing for sale, the. Entry homes are no longer available in, in Lacey and it's detrimental to our community not to have affordable housing. For build that generational wealth and to have friends that um. Support people who uh might not have access to extremely high levels of income. And even for the uh, the rentals that are going in here, it seems that people are going to be. People that are, are going to be living inside of apartment are going to be people who are teachers. I, I rented for many years while teaching. And our nurses and, and our community members who, who are real, ready and able to, to pay these. Type of ranks that are necessary, so.
I, you know, I don't think anybody disagrees with me about that. I mean, I think it's a huge issue. And I think we do need to be concerned about it, but I don't think we can do it through zoning changes. Changes. I think it has to be. Much more, um, much larger question that's addressed at, at other levels than the planning.
Right, and, and on the surface, changing this from low density to medium density, doesn't foreclose the option of someone to. Put in housing that could be condos and could be. Having met with this developer, that's not what he's doing.
That's his first project.
Okay. Communications and announcements, anything? You remember we're not meeting in July, our next meeting is August second. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.